Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Toth.
Mr. Bureau Patel.
Here.
Mr. Romano.
Here.
Ms. Peng. Ms. White.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Rivera.
Oh yeah, I'm here.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Here.
Ms. Patel.
Here.
Mr. Lugo. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Opening statement?
Yes. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act 1975, C-231 Sunshine Law, the Edison Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education Administrative Office. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger.
Thank you. At this point, we are going to adjourn to privileged session. In accordance with NJSA Section 10412, the Edison Board of Education adjourns to confidential session for the purpose of following: confidential personnel and board matters, pending litigation, student matters, HIB. Can I have a motion, Mr. Romano?
Motion. Second.
Second, Mr. Schneider. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. We'll adjourn to privileged session. We will be back once it's done. Thank you. See you also. Call to order. We will reconvene to open session. Time is 7:05. The first thing on the agenda is strategic plan update. Ms. Heather Daniel? Or Dr. Huss?
Do you want to, you have to come out of Zach? What do you have to take a vote to come out of Zach?
Oh yeah, sorry. Vote to come out of Zach from executive session?
Motion.
Motion. Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Ms. Heather Daniel and Dr. Huss for strategic plan update. Yeah, Dr. Huss and Heather Daniel.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Patel. Thank you, Dr. Aldarelli, members of the board, members of the public. It's a pleasure to be here to present in front of you this evening. In honor of the great Charlie Ross, and being that we are guests in his building, I'm here to tell you tonight what's great about the engagement action team of the strategic plan. What is great about this plan, and to start with, is my co-chair, Heather Daniel, who is going to present with me tonight, and the members of our action team, who, if you recall, when we presented in August, we had a plethora of people involved in our committee, and a nice sampling of parents, administrators, teachers, a student, and different representatives from throughout the district. If you also recall, we did go over the four engagement goals, and are a bit wordy on the slide, but in summation, goal number one was about enhancing district decision-making and presenting more opportunities for the students and their families to give us input in the decision-making. Primary goal number two was to improve upon our transition processes, and that's transitions from year to year and transitions from school to school. Our primary goal number three was to promote the district's mission, vision, and initiatives, and our primary goal number four was to create awareness for community involvement and to enhance the positive district image. So I have the privilege of presenting on the even numbers tonight. I'm going to cover primary goals two and four, and Ms. Daniel is going to take primary goal one and three. So we'll begin with goal number two, to ensure smooth and positive transitions for all students. When we talk about that, there's two types of transitions. Transition from year to year, first to second grade, third to fourth grade, and then the bigger transitions, which are building-wide transitions, when you have those targeted years of fifth grade and eighth grade, right? When you're in a school for six years, from kindergarten through fifth grade, and then the big year comes when you're going to go on to the middle school. And we want to look at how to improve those transitions for those four schools that are going in, or those three schools that are going into a new middle school. And then similarly, the other transition year, that's a huge one for students, and maybe twice as big as fifth grade is eighth grade to ninth grade, right? When you finish your middle school and you're heading off to the high school. What we're doing to look at those two different transition types is auditing our current practices, meaning we just had back-to-school nights in September, early October. We had parent-teacher conferences in November, and we are going through conversations, meetings, data gathering about how those went, how our back-to-school nights were received by parents, what recommendations teachers have to improve those, and similarly, doing the same thing with conferences and asking the same type of questions. We are also looking at modernizing our models, right? Presenting some of the things we do in a virtual capacity, so that if you're working at night, you might still be able to get into your classroom virtually and see what's going on back-to-school night. We're having discussions about how to do parent-teacher conferences differently, especially at the high school level. Those of you who have high schools, you know you have eight minutes for a parent-teacher conference. That goes very quickly. Would it be more efficient to do that virtually? And those are things that are being discussed. There's pros and cons to doing virtual, and there's pros and cons to doing in person. So there might not be one right answer, but it might be a hybrid of those options to create the best answers. We're also looking at community-building retreats and other special events when we're talking about engagement, ways to bring people in to the schools other than just those two nights, right? A lot of parents that are at school at back-to-school night and are in a parent-teacher conference, and they may not be there again until the end of fifth grade, or until the eighth grade moving up ceremony, or maybe to high school graduation. So how can we do special events or community-building retreats that bring more people in more often? And mostly, our redesign is going to be witnessed and seen at the start of next year. Like I said, back-to-school night and parent-teacher conferences are behind us, and we didn't change much for this year, if anything. But what we did do is after those evenings took place, is we did a lot of brainstorming, thought-provoking conversations and data gathering, so that we can start to plan for next year and make different changes. And then this spring, with our transitions that are already in place, a lot of them are already taking place, orientations, fifth-grade tours of the middle schools, eighth-grade tours of the high schools, we are going to look at them, and really, when we have principal meetings, have them share best practices, because a lot of them are operating in what they do in their building, but not knowing what's being done in another building. And by sharing those best practices, we can establish routines and consistency amongst all 12 elementary schools or among all four middle schools, that no matter where you go to school, you're getting the same experience as your friend across town, across the street, or anywhere else in a different school in the district. For goal number four, we're looking to foster partnerships among all our stakeholders. And when we say all, we are really taking a wide breadth of people that we're trying to encompass in this endeavor. We are looking first and foremost to enhance partnerships with local businesses to establish mentorships and internships opportunities, especially for our older students, those who are going to college, but also those who may not be thinking about going to college and want to explore different career opportunities. One of the steps we have taken to achieving this goal is meeting with people who are on the Chamber of Commerce in town, and we're trying to establish more of regular meeting, maybe a monthly meeting, or attending their existing monthly meetings, to create these relationships, to then open the doors for more mentorships and internships. We have them really started at a small microscopic level, but we would like that to expand over the next couple of years. You know, this is a five-year plan. By the fifth year of this plan, to have multiple and abundance of opportunities for kids to be mentoring and interning within our community. As you know, you drive down Route 1, you drive down 27, Oak Tree Road, there are businesses everywhere, and there are a wide variety of businesses. So depending on what the interest of the student is, we're going to be looking for ways to find opportunities for them to collaborate, the students and the businesses. One of the things that we were receiving feedback from the businesses is, we have to figure out a way to do that without making it more work for them, right? We don't want to drop off students and be like, here you go, take care of this young man or young woman for the next eight hours, and good luck with that. But if we can find a way where it's symbiotic, and the businesses get something out of it, and they get help from someone who has an interest, who's a high-level student who can contribute, they'll be more willing to partner with us on these endeavors. Excuse me. We're also looking to establish community advisory boards. So you don't have to be a small business owner. You don't have to be somebody who runs something on Route 1, but you have an interest in our education programs, and you want to give us feedback. I think one of the best things that came out of the strategic plan is that each area, each action plan committee had advisory boards. And now that this is done, we want to continue with advisory boards and welcome parents' input and take that input to help us with our decision-making. So look forward to the spring for more information about that coming out, in addition to us keeping in touch with the people who are on our action teams already. Our third bullet point here is to develop an education foundation, and that really is directly correlated with the first bullet point. Again, with the Chamber of Commerce, if we can start an ed foundation, then we can ask for financial contributions that are specifically targeted to fund things that are not within the scope of the budget, things that maybe we figure out by this time of year, right? Oh, that's a great idea. I wish we could fund that, but it wasn't in the budget, and everything we have in our budget is already tied up. We can go to the ed foundation, and we could do grants and fund innovative ideas and make great things happen, and then in turn, give our businesses credit for helping us make those great things happen. So again, in spring, when, not even the spring, when we get back in January, be on the lookout for more news about the Edison Township Ed Foundation. And finally, the last bullet point is about engaging our senior citizens. And one of the nice things I was firsthand witness of yesterday is our J.P. Stevens Choir came and sang at the Ed Center, beautiful, angelic voices. But not just did they do that for us, after they were done singing at the Ed Center, they went out to the senior citizen complex, the assisted living complex, and they sang to our senior citizens to help bring them some holiday cheer, but also to showcase the great things that go on in our schools. So we want to figure out a way to continue that and to increase that. Let those who live in our community but maybe do not have a direct connection to our schools anymore, let them in the doors, get them here at school plays, get them at our concerts, and let them see the great things going on. So again, more to come when we get back in January about these, but those are the highlights of goals two and four that we're working on, trying to strengthen our operations and build community. And of course, my right-hand person here, Heather, is going to come up, Mrs. Daniel, and talk about how she's enhancing our collaboration.
Thank you, Dr. Huss, and thank you, Board of Education members, for the honor to present to you tonight regarding our progress with our engagement pillar. So first and foremost, there was a call for website redesign to enhance engagement and really connect our community with the information that we want to get out to our stakeholders. So we embarked on our website redesign, as well as an integration of an AI chatbot, which was launched September 1. And we have to remember that our engagement drives progress, but I'm going to share some metrics with you right now, some measurements of the engagement over the last 90 days, or as of the September 1 launch, so you can see the kind of numbers and the kind of responses we're getting for both our website and our chatbot. This is a very concise snapshot of Google Analytics. As of Monday, we had 2.2 million events. As of this morning, we had 2.3. We may be increasing at this very moment. Since launch, we have 2.3 million events on our website, 164,000 active users with views of two per active user, of two views per session, and five views per user. Interestingly, 57-ish of our users are accessing our website via desktop, whereas 41% are accessing our website by mobile, and 1% by tablet. You can see the platform that our users are most often accessing via, as well as locations for the first 90 days, and the browsers. Not surprisingly, our calendar has had the most hits since launch, with 142,165 hits as of September 1. So our calendar is the most popular page. I'm sharing this with you because this is a backward design model in terms of designing websites and really determining what engagement means and how do we drive our engagement for the future. We can look at every school, every metric, all of our 20 schools and our district websites, so that's 21 sites, and work backwards by seeing what our users are engaging in, where they are engaging, and with what content they're engaging, so that we can better improve our product for ultimate use. The second feature I'd like to highlight tonight is our AI chatbot. I want to emphasize that the chatbot is not just a tool. I really look at our chatbot, which I'm going to model for you in a moment, as a bridge that connects our users not only to our website, but with seeking information specific to their own needs, empowering and fostering accessibility across our district, which is a huge component, a common thread across all of our goals. So when you access our website, our chatbot is in the bottom right-hand corner, and our users can enter questions. So they might enter a question like, who is our superintendent? And the AI will deliver an answer. And here we are. We have our answer as who our superintendent is. Now, our users can rate our answers, and I'll talk about that in a moment. Now let's say they want to know if our superintendent is really a rock star. They can enter in the question, is he really a rock star? And the AI will generate the answer. Yes, he is. And I rated the answer as very helpful. So this is an example of programming the chatbot, but I'll talk about that in a moment. Notice all the languages that the chatbot is available in, as well as a new feature on the top of the chatbot, which is a survey rating the experience. A three or lower will give an optional question of how to improve the website experience, as well as the communication preferences, whereas a five, or a four or five will give the optional prompt as to what communication preferences are in the future. Again, this is a backward design model that we can determine where our users are coming from and how we meet their needs in the future. Now to the metrics. From the 9-1 launch, we have a record-breaking 5,000-plus total engagements and 7,300-plus questions. What does that mean? We have over 5,000 individuals who have asked questions via our chatbot, yes, and more than 7,000 questions. So several users are asking, obviously, more than one question. The accuracy rate is now at 98%. I'm going to get a sip of water because my mouth is dry. Regarding the programming, you notice that we asked the question, or I asked the question, is the superintendent really a rock star? So on the backend, I'm training the AI to answer questions in a certain way. I will be taking that training off after this meeting. However, we can train our chatbot to make sure that it's answering the questions accurately. So on the backend, on the data end, I'm daily going in to our platform to see our results and to better drive our users to get the correct answers. Another real-world example is a beginning-of-the-year question. Are there maps of our school, or of our schools? So that question was the most frequently asked question within the first week prior to school starting, as well as the first week after. So I noticed that question was trending. We don't provide maps of our schools for security reasons. So in the backend, I was able to program the chatbot to answer the question, maps of our schools are not available online. So there is an example of programming the chatbot or training the chatbot on the backend. Interestingly enough, our top languages that are being used in terms of entering the language natively in the chatbot are as listed, which is very different than the list of languages that are determined by our parent portal on Genesis data. So the languages you see here are the native languages that the questions are being asked via the chatbot on the left. On the right, those are the top categories, some general questions, and then you can see a breakdown of some content area questions. This is an example of analytics that will really drive improvement in all of our websites. Each chatbot metric range is aligned to each school. This is the district chatbot metric range. So for example, the question, school year calendar, we've had 301 questions regarding the school year calendar since 9-1, and obviously, 301 questions are not listed on the right-hand side. But you can see the breakdown of the authentic questions on the right. And if you look down, you can see questions are being asked in native languages, and that speaks directly to one of the goals, to make all of our resources accessible to all of our community members. So moving forward, I'm speaking to goal one, as well as goal three. As Dr. Huss mentioned, he's doing the even numbers, I'm doing the odd numbers. The major crux of goal one is enhancing decision-making through inclusivity and collaboration. These are the main centralized communications points that we have really made progress on, and this progress has been recorded in our dashboard online. We've redesigned our websites for ADA compliance. We've integrated a new app. We've integrated a calendar system by building 21 Google calendars and streamlining those into one main calendar that can be fed into the app, so parents can subscribe to specific schools or the district to get the individual feed that they would like. We have an insider newsletter that launched last year. We have over 40,000 viewers as of yesterday. We are going to be implementing our Parent Square Pilot Program, which is a streamlined K through 12 classroom-to-home communication system, so that all classrooms have the streamlined communication system, whether your child is in kindergarten or 12th grade. And of course, we have our dashboard where all of this data is being uploaded, which is also evidence of making progress. Our public outreach and recognition platforms include the integrated live feed and news features, where every school can post their live feed and news to the district and vice versa. We've launched a new YouTube communications channel that celebrates our students. We are growing social media platforms, and Dr. Aldarelli is establishing a SAGES program, Superintendent's Advisory Group for Empowering Students, which is welcoming students from all of our high schools to apply and have monthly or bimonthly meetings with Dr. Aldarelli to truly get a pulse on the student experience here in Edison Township Public Schools. And the application will be closing next Monday evening, so any students who might be listening to this, or if you know any students who would like to encourage to apply in grades nine through 12, please welcome that. Also, we'll be launching a Superintendent's podcast, and of course, all of the surveys that we are doing are gathering ongoing feedback. Goal three, I've hit on many of these items. The first one is, I think, the most important. Goal three is a district-wide communication plan, and we have to look at this as a plan within a plan. A communication plan is embedded in the strategic plan. The communication plan is not just these individual items, but truly doing a roadmap for what our communications will look like within the next five years embedded within the strategic plan. So again, like Dr. Huss had mentioned about some of the other programs that we are progressing with, we are auditing and designing our communication plan under the standards of the new, the National School Public Relations Association, so that we can ground our communication plan in our Vision 2030 strategic plan. All of these other items that I mentioned align with the streamlined communications and the addressing of the language needs, as well as identifying the communication gaps, where metrics and the language acquisition via all of those platforms are key. We have also engaged 20 webmasters, new positions, so in order to align our district-wide vision and to give each school their unique identities within their school website branding, we have extracurricular webmasters now in place at each school, and they're engaging in monthly trainings and ongoing trainings with me to align their websites to our strategic plan. I invite all of you, if you haven't done so already, and our community to stay informed, stay engaged, and stay connected. You can do that by downloading the app, if you have not already done so, also connecting to some of our social media, including a new LinkedIn that we're using to start really celebrating what it's like to work in Edison Township Public Schools, which is a gift. And LinkedIn is our next big move in terms of social media. Also, we invite you to share your experience via the chatbot. The only way we can improve our communications is to get feedback. So the built-in survey that we created will allow us to start to get real-time feedback, transactional feedback beyond those broader surveys that are initiated throughout our And I'm going to hand it back over to Dr. Huss. Thank you so much.
So really, nothing more to say other than how great is Heather Daniel, and how great an addition is she. It's no wonder that she won Communication Director of the Year this year from her association. And we look forward to great things to come in the new year. We've been doing a lot of behind-the-scenes work. You do see a lot upfront on the website and through the communication tools, but we look forward to the year to come and a lot more coming out to improve the engagement and make the members of the community feel more welcome in the education process. So thank you, and happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Huss, and thank you, Heather. Heather, you are phenomenal with your personal situation and everything that you have been through this year. The website was launched on time, and what you put together so far in this website is truly admirable. The chatboard, this is all new stuff. And if we talk about all the features, it's giving the right answers, like rock star Dr. Aldarelli is giving the correct answers. So you've probably trained the chatboard well, so that's very good, really very promising. So thank you so much, Dr. Huss, for all your efforts with this pillar. It looks very promising with the engagement, and how we love to see the fact that Dr. Aldarelli is very much engaged with the students and the community, and more to come with this pillar, and looks, the future is in great hands. So thank you both very much. Great job. Next on the agenda, we have update of long-range facilities plan by Mr. Toth.
You got the clicker, Ms. Daniel? No problem. In any which way, we've received the draft of our long-range facilities plan for the next five years, which was prepared by DMR Architectural Group, along with input from district stakeholders, building administrators, central office administration, students, and the like. That can be found on our website under the strategic plan. You can go through and look at the varying concept designs, also improvements to building infrastructure in terms of mechanical HVAC, air conditioning, and an associated cost estimate for each project at each building. It also takes into account the varying capacity issues for the needs of our students as we continue to grow. Like I said, this is a five-year look ahead, and we'll be submitting this to the DOE ultimately for them to review based on the New Jersey Department of Education guidelines and their building standards for their approval. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So piggybacking on what Mr. Toth said, DMR Architects, they developed a comprehensive facilities master plan, which is this one, the Long Range Facilities Plan. This effort is focused to ensuring that our district can continue to provide an optimal education environment that supports modern teaching practices and anticipated future needs. In collaboration with the district and the representatives from DMR, they visited buildings, gained insights into the, you know, the needs of the building, and looked at enrollment and everything else, all the other factors, and they identified specific requirements for enhancing the... for enhancing the, all the comforts and all the things that we need to resolve to get what we need for our students. So that's the result. Every district does it once in a few years. The last time we had Dr. Alderelli, if I'm not mistaken, was 2018. So it's been more than five years. It's recommended to do it five years as part of the audit. So this year, we did the Long-Range Facilities Plan. It's completed in the draft, and the next step is sending it to the DOE for approval. So great job, everyone who was involved in that, Mr. Toth, and Mr. Colibas, and everyone else. And we have a very light agenda, last day of the wonderful year, where we had significant achievements, successes, including we just saw the brand-new launch of the website and our rock star, Dr. Alderelli, and his team, the administrative team, had really achieved a lot. This board has achieved a lot. So, you know, we look forward to celebrate the successes at the end of the year. Right, I will give it on to Superintendent Dr. Alderelli.
Great, thank you, Board President Patel. For my superintendent's report, I'm actually going to just keep it brief. You know, obviously, we have a light agenda this evening, but I would be remiss if I didn't begin by wishing all of the members of the Edison Township Public Schools community a joyful and peaceful holiday season. You know, this is the time to spend with family, friends, rest, relax, make connections with loved ones that you haven't seen in quite some time. And I know I speak on behalf of the entire board, I wish all of you a very healthy, happy, and prosperous new year, and we're looking forward to 2025 with great enthusiasm. And I do have a few recognitions right now as well. Ms. Patel, if I can transition into that. At this time, we do have three Board of Education members who we would like to recognize for our service, for their service over the past three years here at Edison Township. On behalf of the entire Edison Township community, we want to sincerely thank you, Mr. Brian Rivera, Mr. Doug Schneider, and Board President Patel, for your service and your commitment to our schools. Your leadership, support, your volunteerism has been instrumental in shaping the educational landscape, always prioritizing what's in the best interest of our students and our staff, and always making sure you're doing so with an attention to detail when it comes with regards to finances. Through your hard work, thoughtful decision-making, and dedication, you've made a lasting impact on the future of our community. We are grateful for the countless and tireless hours that you've put in and devoted to ensuring that our schools continue to thrive and grow, making Edison a premier school district. Your legacy of service will be remembered. It has been an honor and a privilege to work alongside all of you. I can't thank you enough, and I know I speak on behalf of our team and all of the faculty here. We greatly appreciate the service that you've provided to the Edison Township Public Schools. So I do have some commemorative plaques. If I wouldn't mind coming to the front there, I'll call some names, and I know Ms. Daniel is somewhere, maybe take a picture? Does that sound good? Yeah, perfect, all right. I'd like to begin with a board member, Mr. Brian Rivera. And lastly, our Board of Education President, Mr. Bural Patel. And Ms. Patel, that concludes my report for this evening.
Next, we have Student Council Representatives, Edison High School President, Director Dec.
Hey, everyone. There's been a lot of good stuff going on around Edison High leading up to winter break, and that includes concerts on back-to-back nights earlier this month, with both the choir and band having successful performances in this auditorium. And this Thursday, the orchestra is joining the party and having their winter concert at 6:30 PM again right here. And this past Friday, our orchestra ran their annual gingerbread house-making contest, and the day before that, we had our Language Honor Society inductions, which all went well. We also had our fall sports varsity awards night last week, with athletes from every sport, from girls tennis to the football team, being recognized for their accomplishments this past fall season. It was also another opportunity to recognize the large amounts of winning we had with our teams in general. And speaking of sports, our winter athletics are ramping up and getting into their seasons, with the boys' basketball team having its first game tomorrow, matched up against North Plainfield, so come out and support if you can. But if you can't drive the half hour to get there, our first home game, home game is on the 23rd, which is next Monday, against Piscataway. And the girls' basketball team just had its first game and lost in a heartbreaker to Highland Park yesterday with a final score of 44 to 42. However, a bright spot is freshman Carmella Arana leading the team in scoring in her first high school game. And the boys' bowling team has been perfect through six games so far. Shout out to John Ray and James Tavening for their respective 191 and 206 averages. And just yesterday, the team beat what was an undefeated JP squad to reach a record of 6-0 and remain atop the division alone. And now, going away from sports, we're currently having our holiday-themed Spirit Week, with today's theme being holiday hats, and tomorrow's being festive feet, which is our alliterative, and now that I'm saying it aloud, somewhat off-putting theme for wearing Christmas-themed socks. And looking ahead, we plan on getting some EHS merch out to start the new year sometime in January, and that's all I got for now. I hope everyone enjoys the winter break, and Merry Christmas, and happy holidays to all.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you, Mr. Director Dec. Next is JP Stevens High School President Sanvi Bhurigam.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sanvi Bhurigam, and I'm one of the co-presidents at JP, and I'm excited to share some updates on our school. Our homecoming last month was a tremendous success. The energy and excitement were palpable as students and faculty came together to celebrate our school spirit and tradition. The decorations were stunning with vibrant colors and creative designs that captured our theme of enchanted garden. Overall, the event not only highlighted our school spirit, but also fostered a sense of belonging among everyone involved. Last week, Student Council also hosted our annual talent show, JPS Got Talent. Our talent show featured dancers, singers, guitar ensembles, and a Rubik's Cube master. The theme of our talent show was Harry Potter, and we sorted all the audience members into houses as they walked in. The Harry Potter talent show had skits and magical decorations, which filled the Woodrow Wilson Middle School auditorium, and our winning act was our dancer, Upassana, and overall, it was an enchanting night. Next month, Student Council will also host our Family Feud contest between all the classes and the staff, so come out to support. In terms of athletics, our winter sports are starting up their pre-seasons with practices and scrimmages, and we wish them the best of luck going into their seasons. Lastly, at JP Stevens, we truly embrace the festive spirit throughout the year, especially during the Christmas season. Our hallways come alive with the joyful sounds of carolers singing, while the band and orchestra students travel from class to class, filling the school with holiday cheer. This wonderful tradition brings everyone together, creating a warm and inviting atmosphere that embodies the true spirit of the season. Thank you for your time, and on behalf of all of JP Stevens, happy holidays.
Thank you so much. Next up is public comments on resolutions only. Any public comments on resolutions? Saying none? Oh, Matt, yes, go on.
Good evening, Matt Revnak, ETA President. I believe it's under resolutions as personnel. Just want to congratulate Mr. Marzano for getting the athletic director's position over at JP Stevens. It's a great choice. I know, Mr. Marzano, for years, we were colleagues. I umpired when he was coaching baseball at JP Stevens, and excellent choice by the administration and board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comments on resolutions only? Saying none? Motion to end public comments on resolutions?
Motion.
Motion. Second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I understand public comments on resolutions. Now, we will move on to a motion to approve personnel report. A motion to approve personnel report. Mrs. White, motion, I'll second it. Roll call, Mr. Toth.
Mr. Lugo.
Yes.
Ms. Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Rivera.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Peng.
Yes.
Vice President Romano. President Patel.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you so much. Everyone, now I'll pass it on to Dr. Alderelli for a comment.
Great, thank you very much. I would just like to acknowledge the board's action. Just now, we have just appointed and named the new supervisor of athletics at JP Stevens High School, Mr. Robert Marzano. Mr. Marzano, congratulations. If you wouldn't mind maybe saying, just, I know I told you I wasn't...
Thank you, Dr. Alderelli.
Robert Marzano is an educational thought leader, ASCD.
Lot smarter than I am. Lot smarter than I am. Thank you, Dr. Alderelli and the board, for having confidence in me to lead the JP Stevens Athletic Department. I've been a part of Edison Public Schools for over 45 years, as a student, a teacher, and a coach, and it's always been a dream of mine to be athletic director at JP Stevens. I'm very excited to get started, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So much, Mr. Marzano, and welcome aboard in your new role. Next, we have motion to approve Administration, Curriculum, and Instruction and Pupil Services Report. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Second.
Mr. Schneider. Roll call, Mr. Toth.
Mr. Lugo.
Yes.
Ms. Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Rivera.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Peng.
Yes.
Vice President Romano. President Patel.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is motion to approve Finance Report.
Motion.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Second.
Mr. Schneider, second. Roll call, Mr. Toth.
Mr. Lugo.
Yes.
Ms. Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Rivera.
I abstain.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes, on all, except one abstention on a conflict. My wife got reimbursed like 100 bucks for something.
Got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's got it.
Real quick, Mr. Rivera, you abstain on everything?
Yes.
Okay, noted. Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Peng.
Yes.
Vice President Romano. President Patel.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, we have committee reports, Foster's Policy Committee, Mr. Rivera.
The policy meeting met on Tuesday, December 3, at 4:30 PM at the Educational Center. We discussed a bunch of policies. I think, Eddie, we were talking about a couple of hundred policies that were outdated, right, Eddie?
I'm sorry.
We were talking about about 300 policies or so that was outdated.
Yeah, there was somewhere in the ballpark of maybe 150 that were mandated, that we had to revisit, another 30 that were, you know, missing, so yeah.
So these are some of the policies that we're looking at, but Eddie, what's the number at now? Where are we at with the work that we did this year?
Right now? We're just shy of 100.
Nice, appreciate that.
Yep.
So again, the policies that we looked at and revised, there's a list of them there. There's also policies for discussion, and then some additional policies we talked about was competitive contracting, choice of vendor, and emergency contracts. Basically, we were looking at, some of the people in the policy committee, including myself, felt like there's too much conversation with vendors. So we're looking at ways on how we could rectify that situation. I did ask the attorney to look into some verbiage about two weeks ago. I'm still yet to hear from the attorney, so I don't know if the attorney is going to fulfill the request, but one of the concerns we had, other than these new policies, were, again, vendor reform of some sort.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Mr. Romano, thank you again for the opportunity to deliver the Special Education and Preschool Report. Special Education and Preschool Committee met on November 21 in attendance. We're Mr. Romano, Mr. Rivera, Mr. Patel, Ms. Peng, Dr. Ray, myself, Dr. Huss, and I believe, I believe Mr. Toth was there too, correct? So actually, it's not going to sound like good news to start, but we really have some incredible news. On December 3, the district's preschool expansion aid application was denied by the state of New Jersey. This program had always been communicated to the community as contingent on state funding. So the district went through an exhaustive appeals process, which actually ended up on the Assistant Commissioner's desk. I got to wrap myself out a little bit. Dr. Alderelli had to ask me to maintain my professionalism during that meeting, but the end of the day, in the 24-25 school year, the Edison Township Public Schools is not going to be receiving state funding for our preschool program. However, on the 21st, through conjunction of Dr. Alderelli, our business office, and our local private partners, we proposed a plan to our Special Education Committee that involved meeting with our private partners, securing letters of intent, ultimately having them complete contracts to reflect a modified agreement that both sides had to live with. And tonight, our Board of Education, on the finance report, just approved maintaining the programs of 540 preschoolers. So I wanted to thank you for that. And as we move forward, the district will continue to apply for this funding, and we're very confident that we will be in a better position next time, or this time next year. So thank you, everybody. Really appreciate your support, and on behalf of all the parents of the three- and four-year-olds, thanks for keeping them in school.
Thank you so much, Dr. Tohi. One thing I would like to mention and highlight over here is whatever situation was brought upon on the district with the, in terms of funding, there are very few who would step up and think out of the box and really try to resolve this in such a short timeframe in the favor, incredibly in the favor of the district. Dr. Alderelli, Dr. Huss, Dr. Tohi, and Mr. Toth, all of you achieved that. That's a great achievement, kept the program running, up and running, and maintained the same level of program. Thank you so much for your incredible contributions. Really appreciate that, and the little kids who will be part of program will remember. So thank you so much for that. Next up is, we'll have board member comments. I'm sure everyone wants to speak today, so we'll start from here, Mr. Lugo.
Thank you, President Patel. Firstly, I would just like to say it was very nice working with the three-partying board members, President Patel, Board Member Brian Rivera, and Board Member Doug Schneider. I've learned from each and every one of you my first year here on the board, and thank you for, thank you for helping, thank you for helping me, and you'll be missed. And I know this is the last meeting of the year. I would just like to take the opportunity to wish all of our students, faculty, and staff, all the board members, and all of our residents a very happy, safe, and healthy holiday season and new year, and look forward to 2025. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lugo. Mrs. Sanjana Patel, I'll come back to you, Brian.
Good evening, everyone. I like...
I'd like to thank you, Mr. Schneider and Rivera, for being our part. Thank you so much for everything, and we look forward, if I need any help, I'll see you. And thank you, everyone, all more members, like, two thousand twenty-four is awesome, no argument, no nothing, so this is a good, and I hope two thousand twenty-five is same thing. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yeah, I think I'd like to thank, you know, Mr. Rivera, Mr. Schneider, and, and Mr. Patel for their service. I think it takes a lot of commitment, all of the board member knows that, so I appreciate, you know, you, you committing your time and, uh, um, everything to the, for the community, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. White.
Well, I would like to just take this opportunity to say how privileged I am to serve with Brian, Bureau, and Douglas. I'm so grateful to have the, to have had the three of you this, for this length of time, it's just so incredible. The only thing I can give you is a heartfelt thank you so very much for your unselfish service, you know, uh, to the children of Edison. You know, thank you so, so much, and I'm gonna miss all three of you, you know I am.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Peng.
Uh, yeah, I too wanted to thank you, um, Doug, Brian, and Bureau for your time, your service, and it's totally volunteer work. It's not easy, we've done this, and it's, um, very time-consuming, and a lot of times, it's time away from your family, and, uh, you know, your dedication to supporting our staff and students really made a lasting impact, um, on the district. Really appreciate your work and your effort and your energy to this board. Also, I just want to say, um, kudos to Heather and Dr. Huss for the wonderful website. Um, as IT professional, I know it's not easy to build a website, every, you know, line, every picture, every page, uh, involves a lot of, you know, lines of code and tremendous testing and debugging and retesting, so it's, uh, you know, a wonderful job done. Lastly, um, want to say a congratulations to several students that I know that got, uh, committed to college already, either through athletic recruit or early decision, and to all those seniors, best of luck, you know, it's the last few days before the deadline. Uh, it's stressful, but, uh, you know, uh, it's only a couple of few weeks more. And, uh, I do, as a liaison to Edison, uh, actually to J.P. PTSO, I do want to take this opportunity to thank them for, um, their work. Recently, I heard that they collaborated with outside, uh, educational organization to help our senior students with their college applications, uh, answering questions, helping them review their applications to make sure nothing is missed, and all these services are done free of a charge. So, I do want to, you know, commend them for their, for being creative and, uh, help our students when they need the help the most. And, um, finally, um, to all the staff members, students, parents, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, enjoy the holidays. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Peng. Uh, Vice President Romano.
Thank you. I don't know what constitutes a rock star. See, that's one of my problems here. Now, if you play piano, like somebody I know plays piano, uh, he actually is a rock star when it comes to that. I'd just like to say Merry Christmas to everyone, Happy New Year. But I got to, I, I have to really, we have a staff that works tirelessly. We have teachers. They're amazing. They're what makes this job easy, because we ask for stuff, and they, they supply it. We have custodians that do their job every day, grounds people, maintenance staff. Without them, we couldn't do this. Yes, I wanna thank everybody. And it's, the Constitution says, it starts off with "we, the people." No, it's you, the taxpayers of Edison. Without your support and without all of our staff working together, this job would not be easy. Our staff is one of the best in the state. We have a great superintendent, we have assistant superintendents, we have directors, we have team leaders. They all, all work hard every day, and our students are challenged every day. That's one of the things that people don't see. Our students are being challenged to go further, to climb the mountain. Without the public support, without us, the people, we, the people, our problem is simple. We have to communicate better, we have to take and realize the people that are doing the job for us. So, once again, I thank you, all of you, all of we, the people. Thank you very much, have a great, great end of the year and a beginning of the next year. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice President Romano. Mr. Rivera, your final speech.
Good evening, everybody. I, I actually wasn't planning on speaking, I was just gonna make my way out, but, um, I do wanna say thank you to the board, and thank you to, um, the teachers, administrative staff, people that we worked with. Um, I guess you could say I'm having mixed feelings, so I just really didn't wanna talk. I was gonna bring up issues that I think the public should be aware of, but I'm choosing not to, that'll come out another day. But I do inquire, I do tell the public to please inquire on certain things that you see on this agenda. Um, with that said, I do wanna say, you know, happy holidays, I'm doing the right thing, going out, um, taking advice of my fellow board members. Um, wish you a happy holidays, um, and I will see you sitting next to Carol and Ms. Conway next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Mr. Schneider.
Uh, hi, everybody. Uh, same with, uh, as, as Mr. Rivera said, I didn't really prepare much. But I will say that this has been an overwhelmingly positive experience. The last three years have been amazing to be on the board. I recommend to anybody, especially those of you that are lifelong Edison residents, um, it means a lot to be up here, and especially with the, with, uh, I have the privilege of, my kids are now at the school, and, uh, Mr. Ross, I see a lot, and, uh, uh, Dave Sandell, the athletic director here, always does a good job of shouting us out when he says, hey, that's Doug Schneider, class of ninety-seven, he's an eagle, he's an eagle. Or if Brian's there, he calls us an eagle, and it is something that means a lot. Um, walking these halls as a student, being able to impact the students now, however we could do it. And, again, there's disagreement, there's, uh, politics, there's social media, all the stuff that nobody really likes. But when you really boil it down, you need to still everything. We have done, um, amazing work together, the last three years have been overwhelmingly positive. When you do this the right way, this is not a sport, this isn't a TV show, this is actual work. We have work product to prove that we did a nice job the last few years. I, I believe next year's board will do great and do great things, and I look forward to watching it. Um, I appreciate all of you in the audience, many of you I know, I, I see, uh, Mr. Ericos here, which is nice, so he's gonna be up here, maybe this seat or that seat, who knows, but can't wait to see it next year. And, um, I look forward to, uh, everything that this wonderful district, um, has to offer for not just, uh, me as a resident, but as a parent of students here, and thank you to everybody, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Uh, greetings, everyone, I do have a speech, and if you wanna fall asleep, that's fine. Hopefully, you can watch this, if you fall asleep watching it now, you can watch this in the future. So, this is my final speech as a board of ed member and the president of Board of Education. Though my tenure has come to an end, I am so very proud to have served in what is undeniably one of the greatest school district in the state of New Jersey. It has been distinct honor and privilege to serve with and for you. Uh, we have made tremendous achievements, growth, and progress in the last four years of my tenure as a board of ed member. And everything, all the challenges was met with hard work, determination, collaboration, and tending to a fantastic result. The highlight of my tenure has to be the hiring of our rock star superintendent, Dr. Alderelli. It is a sigh of relief, and as a passionate parent and a passionate resident, it is wonderful to leave our district in such capable hands. As I have said time and time again, I know that his hard work and his passion and commitment will mean great things for our district. And I'm pleased that I have assisted in laying the groundwork with him on which he will build on. And what a beautiful foundation we have built. In the last four years, thanks to our hard work, the state aid, and I might say my own hope and determination, the district has experienced a historic and unprecedented zero percent tax increase. Into, out of those three, those four years, I had a distinct privilege to be the chair of finance and to work on that budget, and I hope that continues. I know the effort and careful planning it took. It is this financial responsibility that is our testament to the district's commitment to financial, um, goals. Despite of that, despite of zero percent tax increase, the district continued its progress on the infrastructure in the last four years, the completion of the Lincoln School, which you guys, uh, approved before I got in here. Uh, the four new gyms in all the middle schools, which we just did the ribbon-cutting for. Expansion of J.P. Stevens High School with thirty classrooms and the labs and other facilities, which will come to fruition and open up next year for the students. The hu, energy-saving improvement plan, highly, uh, which provides zero budget-neutral facility improvement for the district with zero tax increase, as well as solar panels, which will save money and which will help the district for years and years to come. And at the same time, we work to ensure that this went beyond the flashy projects. After decades of disrepair, we have taken on small projects as well to fulfill the wish list of all the principals, administrators, and staff members to provide resources to our students, call it parking lot upgrades, bathroom upgrades, H.O.E.C. upgrades at the school, the playground upgrades, ev- everything, name a thing, despite of zero percent tax increase, because it's our commitment to provide our students the best we can. We also built upon less tangible infrastructure. Now, again, despite of zero percent tax increase, uh, just because learning cannot happen on empty stomach, the board continued for last four years, free breakfast, the subscription bus fees did not go up single cent. On top of it, the board, in last four years, reintroduced full-day kindergarten, it came back. And at the same time, um, I thought you would say about that, Mr. Rivera, and the same time, uh, we have universal pre-K, which we just talked about, and Dr. Tohi and his team put tremendous efforts in it, ensuring a good start for every student who calls Edison their home, no matter how young. We launched the parent help desk in the last four years, something that Mrs. White is very passionate about. A brand-new website, which we saw enough about it today, and it's come to fruition, and hopefully, everyone is taking advantage of that. The thought exchange, Ms. Daniel, that seeks feedback from the parents on a continuous basis. The year-end survey, we have a new chief academic officer, Mr. Rick Cohen, who is doing wonderful job in curriculum. Thank you so much for that. Our students are getting more AP and STEM opportunities, and they are being provided cutting-edge tools and technology to be the best. We also refined our waiver process to make it simpler and better for the parents and to provide more opportunities to the students who are seeking. So, thank you so much, Mr. Cohen, for all those efforts. Uh, at the same time, we increased the funding and provided more opportunities to our robotics and STEM clubs at both the high schools. Thank you, Mr. Ross, for helping the students out with that one. We fought back against those items which plague our school systems and affect the health and well-being of our students. I'm talking about the ad hoc culture and the climate committee to address key issues such as vaping, bathroom conditions, and school safety, with webinars and initiatives and the tools and everything that Superintendent Dr. Alderelli and his team are working on. Uh, Dr. Huss, uh, Mr. Ross, uh, Mrs. Blevins from Woodrow, uh, Mr. Toth, and everyone else, great job with everything that you are doing in that direction, Mr. Kessan as well. Um, I personally strive to work very hard with the community, with the PTAs, PTO, connected with the students at all levels. In that environment we built, we continue to thrive so that the students thrive and will continue to thrive. My greatest joy was to participate and celebrate their education. I marvelled at our bright, with our bright young minds, which I had privilege to see year after year in participating and read across America in every single elementary school where I read to at least three classes in each school for four years. Came across, met, uh, thousands of students and staff members. I attended, uh, four years of lively and energetic graduations of our seniors. It was such an honor and privilege to hand over diplomas to so many wonderful students at each graduation. Thanks to all of my fellow board members. Uh, Superintendent Dr. Alderelli, Mr. Toth, Dr. Huss, Mr. Cohen, Dr. Tohi, Ms. Heather Daniel, Pat Kessan, Mr. Kolibas, Judy, thank you so much, um, Mrs. Timon, thank you so much for all your effort, Mrs. Betchy, um, Patrick, uh, for the wonderful videography, all your help, everything that you did for us. And if I missed anyone's name, uh, I apologize for that, but thank you so much to the entire administrative team who has supported us tremendously, it really feels like a family. The district is in very good hands for that. Finally, I want to express my gratitude to the parents, teachers, staff members, all the principals, vice principals, all the building-level administrators, the central administration supervisors, and most importantly, the students and the residents of Edison Township for your dedication and commitment to making Edison an exceptional place to learn and grow. Their dedication is truly remarkable and serves as a testament and commitment of our entire community towards excellence. I am very hopeful and confident that Superintendent Dr. Alderelli and the board coming in next year, Mr. Jerry Shi, Mr. Ralph Erico, and my very good friend, Mr. Ronak Patel, uh, they will work together and continue all the wonderful progress that we have been, the board has been making in last few years, and which will benefit our students tremendously. The district is in good hands, and I urge everyone to come together, to work together, leave the differences aside, and always think, we are all here for the students, and do what is best for the students, and help them climb mountains, and they will be thankful to you, and their generations will be thankful to you. It has been a distinct honor and privilege to serve on the Edison Board of Education last four years. Helping others is a core belief of mine, encapsulated in saying that in the joy of others lies our own. I come from a background deeply rooted in volunteering and community service, and that's something I take much pride on, and due to which I will never give up my efforts to give back to the community, help the community whatever way I can. Hence, today, I ask all those students who are watching this or who will watch in the future, one small favor, give back to your alma mater. There are countless ways you can help Edison, you can help your peers, other students. So, I encourage everyone to give back to Edison for years to come, and I hope I can count on you to help, help the other students thrive the best they can be. Even though I will no longer be in the board in a few days, my commitment to serving the Edison community and helping people will grow stronger day by day. For those who know me, I am always reachable and available and try to help in any way I can. I can. I am very proud of the work the Board of Education have accomplished together as a team. It was indeed a pleasure, a great privilege, and an honor and an incredibly great experience which I will cherish rest of my life. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. Uh, next, we'll open up for public comments. Mrs. Conway.
Thank you, Elizabeth Conway, Twenty Netherwood Circle. Uh, I have a few things. Uh, first, I would like to start with, on the really good note, and thank Brittany Malickia, I believe her name, her last name is pronounced, who, uh, directed the Edison High School strings. That was very close to my heart to be able to experience, um, some of the good things that go on in Edison. They were fabulous. I'm sorry you guys missed it, but I really enjoyed it. Thank you. And I thank, uh, Ms. Malickia. Uh, the second thing, uh, I'd like to talk about is I noticed the one po- uh, two policies on dress code were abolished. And my quick question, and I don't want to discuss it in my six minutes, is, um, will there be a replacement for that at all? Uh, the next item was, um, I know I heard about the, um, pre-K and the application was initially denied, but because of, uh, hard work, we were able to be successful. I was just wondering if, uh, what the initial reason was that we were denied. Uh, the next thing is congratulations to Dave Marzano. I've known Mr. Marzano for many years. He coached my son, who's going to be forty next year in baseball, so, uh, and I taught his son in third grade, who's now twenty-one, so that tells you a lot. Um, the next thing was I would like to appreciate and thank the board members that are leaving. I know what it's like to sit here tonight to have a eulogy and a funeral. I hated it when I was up there, but I just want to say my personal thank you for stepping up and hopefully not going away, as Carol and I will never go anywhere. Next, I'd like to thank Dr. Huss and Heather Daniel. You are fabulous. You, you make sense out of what's going on with the district. I truly thank you and I, and I appreciate that you come back and continually explain things to us. I had wished, uh, I had gotten more information regarding, uh, what's going on with, um, construction. I was able to go see, um, the ribbon cutting at John Adams just lately and Woodrow lately and the Edison Success Academy was beyond fabulous. Uh, I'm just, I'm looking forward to the opening of JP Stevens Auditorium, and it would be nice to find out, you know, how far away are we from that? I realize the construction going on and JP's going to take a while, but I'm really looking forward to initially because missing all the items of what JP puts on is exciting. I know, uh, Mr. Ross always gives me an update of what's going on at Edison High, and I look forward to hearing the same once JP is back in order. And. And finally, happy holidays to everyone. Enjoy them, there's multi-ones, so see you next year.
Thank you. Uh, yes, gentlemen over there.
So, uh, first, Mr. Alder Riley and Mr. Patel, thank you for your leadership and service. My question is regarding the Edison High STEM program. Um, I've been a Edison resident since 2015, um, and I have an eighth grade daughter who is going to a private school. So last week I came for the open house, uh, right in this building, um, for the Edison STEM program from ninth to twelve, uh, and I was told that, uh, I have to be a resident plus, uh, my daughter has to go to a public school. So, uh, I have a request to you, if that policy could be amended, uh, to include all the residents, um, especially because I've been, like, you know, I purchased my house in twenty fifteen, ten years, I am in Edison, could anything be done on that? Thank you.
For the STEM Academy?
Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, so criteria for the STEM Academy, um, is definitely open to, um, any student that fits the criteria, um, that's currently enrolled or is anticipating on enrolling in school. So you'd have to officially be enrolled in school and then apply for that position or in the process of enrolling.
Um, right, but, um, why is it that private school students, even though we have been in Edison for ten years, are being excluded?
Um, because you're not part of the Edison Township Public Schools would be the most simplest answer for that. But in order to attend a program that's offered by the public school, you'd have to be enrolled in, in the public program or in the process of doing that too, right? So if you were in the process of enrolling, um, your child and saying, hey, listen, you know, we've got, um, interest in applying for the STEM Academy at that timeframe, we would make sure that the enrollment department would, um, you know, make, you know, put, put you in touch with, uh, the right people, provide that application process, but it, it is a requirement.
Got, got it. So, uh, I wouldn't be able to apply, uh, is that a fact, right?
I'm sorry, say again.
I wouldn't be able to apply, right, because of this criteria?
If you're not enrolled in the school, you can't apply for a public school program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, I think that was the question.
Yes. Uh, before we go to the next speaker, uh, I forgot to ask.
I think his question is, his, his daughter goes to private school, he wants to go to, uh, you know, STEM program. How can he apply? Cause the application process starts pretty much in December, January.
Starts in December, January, so he would have to start the enrollment process, in other words saying, hey.
For the next year.
For the next year, absolutely.
So she can or he can apply?
Correct.
Uh, I did start the enrollment, she's currently in eighth grade, and I applied and I was told it's, it's not open for me.
So, so why, why don't you work with him offline?
How about we do this, you can sit with Dr. Huss over there, he'll be able to clarify further. Now, before we go on to the next speaker, uh, some of Mrs. Conway's questions I forgot to ask to Alder Riley, if you want to share some.
Yeah, I, I think what, uh, Ms. Conway was referring to was sick leave, not, not grooming, right? The two that we're abolishing are sick leave on this one. Um, and the sick leave ones are, um, it's just, uh, it's, it's not in, in line with the law. So the, the, uh, the sick leave law has changed, we've adopted a suit, a new sick leave policy, um, I believe two agendas ago, actually probably even more than that. Um, and this is just house, housekeeping, you know, uh, the sick leave for three, four, three, two, and four, uh, four, three, two are outdated.
They're in contrary to the new sick leave law.
Correct. Correct. And I think sick leave, you can, you can take a look, I know that, uh, it is updated, I make sure that Mr. Colibas updates it on our website. Progress towards, um, our current outstanding projects, even the ones that are in development phase, they're all located on our, on our website right there. Ms. Daniel will be able to click the link in relationship to that, and I think that was it, I hope. That's what I wrote down.
Is it? The preschool? Oh, preschool.
Yeah, Dr. Tu, there's, uh, there was a couple areas right there. Dr. Tu, he'll kind of fill you in on the, on the devil in the details in relationship to that. Uh, it's just for Ms. Conway, Doc, offline.
Offline.
Got, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, Mr. Mara.
Good evening, Anthony Mara, five, Coletto, Coeur d'Alene, Edison. I'm not here to talk about policy fifty-seven, fifty-six. This is Christmas time, and I want to bless each and every one of you. God says there's a time for everything and a time for every activity under heaven. So I want to bless each and every one of you by name. I'm not accustomed to reading from paper, so I'll ask you to be, be patient with me. Mr. Vishal Patel, may the Lord Jesus Christ bless you and keep you. May his face shine upon you and be gracious to you. May he turn his face toward you and give you peace. Ms. Virginia White, may you come to know the love of God, our Father, through his son, Jesus Christ, and may he be your guide forever and ever. Mr. Schneider, may the Lord Jesus Christ reign in your heart and in the hearts of each family member, each member of your family, may his wisdom permeate you for all of your days. May shine in pain. May the light of Jesus Christ rest in your heart and your mind to where it overflows with joy unspeakable. Mr. Beer Patel, may you come to know the love of God, our Father, through his son, Jesus Christ, and living according to his word, and then you will know him and his love. Mr. Joseph Romano, may the Christ of Christmas be real to you not just now, but forever and ever, and may his righteousness and truth be the foundation of your work on the Board of Ed. Mr. Rivera, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Angena Patel, may you know Jesus Christ through a personal experience with him, and may his joy be yours forever and ever. May you tell all of his grace in your life. Mr. Rivera, I pray favor upon you and blessing upon you. May God, our Father, through his son, Jesus Christ, bless you, and may you know him and draw near to him forever and ever. Mr. Lugo, I pray that you stand firm in the one who has called the way, the truth, and the life, Jesus Christ, and may he be the foundation for your life. It has been an honor coming before this board this year. I will be back in January regarding policy fifty-seven, fifty-six, but as I said, this is a time for blessing, this is a wonderful time where we celebrate the birth of Christ, and may you all have a wonderful Christmas. God bless.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mara. Nobody gives board members anything, ever. You gave us blessings, we really appreciate that. Happy holidays to you, Mr. Mara, and thank you so much. Something that feels very special. Next speaker, uh, next for public comments. Uh, yes, Anthony.
Anthony Diamarin, Wiley Ave. I'm just trying to get my thoughts together here. Uh, first off, I, I noticed, has the, has the motto changed for the, uh, for the district? No more, nothing but excellence? It has. When, when was that?
We did that with our rebranding of the, uh, district website and the launch.
I like it, okay. Not bad, not bad.
We are still committed.
I just happened to notice it.
Still committed to nothing less.
Of course, absolutely, absolutely. Second, um, you know, I, 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 really quick, I usually don't do this, but, uh, I wanted to give a shout out and recognition to the, uh, to the teachers union, actually. And, uh, you know, they've, they've, they've been to countless number of, of township meetings outside of the Board of Ed, uh, backing up residents of this town. Uh, many, I believe, you know, I don't know how many teachers here that, that work here, live here, but I'm sure there's a good amount. But I happened to see, uh, the president, Matt, uh, at the council meeting last week. Um, I didn't have a chance to talk to him there, but, uh, going back when Jeff was here, um, they stood with the residents, um, and you know what? It, it needs to be recognized. Um, you know, I don't know if he had a chance to speak, but just the fact his presence alone of, of the positions they hold, um, it's important, it really is important. It helps on these battles and these fights, so, uh, I just wanted to give them some recognition and, uh, you know, say thank you. The, the next thing I wanted to speak about is the recreation department and these recreation sports regarding this, the use of the schools, uh, or the school, in this case Hoover. You know, we, I don't know how the recreation department and how we got to a point where they control and decide on who uses what gym, when they use it. But to, to, to have them in control of this, it's my belief and my understanding that they do not have, the recreation department, with all due respect to them and, and the, the woman that, uh, that works there, I believe she's leaving now, uh, retiring, but not a full understanding of what's going on inside of the gym, uh, specifically at Hoover. I also don't understand why, you know, we, the Hoover has a new gym, they just built a new gym, I believe, yet she has the final say on who utilizes that gym. That gym belongs to the Board of Education and belongs to the taxpayer of Edison. So I don't know why the recreation at Town Hall controls that decision. And she clearly does not understand, in my opinion, what is really transpiring over there. To have these sport programs fighting over, you know, time and space and, and so on and so forth, um, is, is a bit, is, is ridiculous. Uh, you know, I don't believe she's ever come down to, to see this for herself, what, what's transpiring there, uh, the tight space, the safety concerns. And I just speak for myself, I'm not speaking for anybody, I speak for myself, but there are some major concerns. These parents, uh, that run these leagues, um, are, are just parents dedicating their time, trying to give their child the best possible, um, experience for their sport. But we have so many schools in this district, and, and to be stuck at one school, I understand, for instance, wrestling, they have the mat problems, you know, transporting mats and so, so on and so forth. Um, I, I understand that, but you know, but what about the other schools? I mean, we could, we could transfer, you know, we could utilize some of these other schools, to be stuck at one school fighting over one gym is a bit ridiculous to me. And, and, and I think that the power should be back to the Board of Education. I think you guys should have control over who gets to use these gyms, all right? Designate somebody, um, but I, 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 I think, I believe the next year, hopefully it's reexamined going into next season onto how we structure this a little better. You know, I, I know, I, I know the, the parents, the cheerleaders, the cheerleaders, uh, you know, they, they're, they, they, they need some space, the wrestlers need space, but space is an issue. But when you have other schools just sitting there, you know, during the nighttime, um, it's, to me, it seems more logical than, than anything else to, to maybe maximize that, the, the, the space there and, and, and accommodate everybody. I'm not saying use every school, but, you know, obviously, uh, some of the, some of the other schools. So that's, I really want to just say that, I'm not here to throw anybody under the bus, I mean, it is what it is, but that's just, that's, that's just the reality of the situation. Um, wrestling is, is the type of sport that, you know, kids are moving around, the wrestling, you could just think of, you know, just, just think about all the possibilities of hurting yourself, being stuck in with, you know, a side, a side room where, where they sometimes are, uh, you know, left to, left to use, uh, I don't know what that is, a weight room or whatever it is there at Hoover. I can tell you this, though, I will say this, you know, thank you to Hoover for allowing them to use, utilize that facility. They're very appreciative of it, I, I know they are. Uh, but to, to just put it all on them, it seems a bit much. Maybe opening, opening it up to the other schools would be a more logical situ-, you know, uh, answer to, to this going forward. So, um, with that said, I wish, wish everybody Merry Christmas, and, uh, and that's it. Good luck, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, who's next? Mr. Ross, go ahead.
Good eve- good evening, everyone. Again, I want to echo everybody's holiday wishes, Mr. Romano talking about the staff, uh, custodians, grounds, of course, the ETEA, of course, the Principals and Supervisors Association that come out and work this, also our security officers that don't just act to keep people safe, but they try to teach the young people how to grow up and do things the right way. So we got to shout everybody out, and so Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa. And when you look at all the different celebrations, they always seem to have something to do with light and family and love. So whatever holiday that we're all going to celebrate, I hope that we all have some peace and we can all look for love and peace as we go into new year. Kind of funny that, well, I love to talk about what's great about Edison High, I have to start off by shouting out JP Stevens. Don't believe they could have found a better person for the position of athletic director. Having been here for fifteen years, have seen the dedication he had as a coach, as just someone that goes to events, that sits there and is looking out for the athletes and their family. He's one of the things that makes Edison a great district, and you know, Dave, great job, look forward. I'll see you on Thursday because on Thursday we have the John Spease game here at five-thirty. John Spease was another, another great North Edison person that did a lot of rec, um, basketball and a lot of different things, and we're privileged to have his daughter with us as a teacher and as a coach, and Edison and JP Girls Basketball will be playing. Um, there'll be a lot of donations and things for cancer, so I'd love to see everybody out to that event on five-thirty on Thursday. We've got hockey games in Woodbridge, hopefully the long-term facilities plans, we can get a rink. But we've also got, we've got hockey games in different places going back and forth there in the Woodbridge Club, they're across the street in Woodbridge, uh, at least we're not going down to Pro Skate, but please come out and see those things, and I appreciate Ms. Conway's fine words for the orchestra because after the John Spease game, uh, Mr. Ross is going to be stepping out across the hallway to the orchestra concert. And if you want to see why, uh, we need to get that orchestra room built so that we have the, the space for this fantastic group and this unbelievably dedicated professional and all of her parents that work so hard, that's also on this Thursday night. And I know I'm going to see, um, I'm going to be.
And I know I'm going to see, I'm going to be honest, my favorite, Ms. White, coming out on Friday night for our wrestling. As, I missed last Friday, but we've got another Friday against some school on Tingley Lane, I don't know what it's called. But we're going to, wrestling is off to a fantastic start, so we're looking for some great things there. I wanted, you know, say, you know, Mr. Schneider, I'm glad we got your kids around, that we'll be able to see you around from place to place. We're really excited about tying up loose ends with the new board that's coming in. As always, you know, just appreciate all the work that everybody does and appreciate the ability and the chance to be the principal of Edison High School. So happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Ross, and yeah, I think we really forgot about the rink in the long-range facilities plan, so hopefully Mr. Tooth can do some magic and get that one in there. All right, next for public comments. Yes, Matt.
I got to say, following Mr. Ross is always a difficult position to be in. So first of all, I want to mention again to the three board members, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Rivera, and Mr. Beryl Patel. Thank you for your service to the district and obviously the town of Edison. You know, we don't always see eye to eye on everything, but it's always respect for the time, the dedication that you have. Now, I was thinking back as I'm sitting there, you know, there's three people that are sitting here that are in sometimes thankless positions or, you know, it's easy to second guess, and that's Dr. Alderelli, myself, and the board members. You know, you can't make everybody happy all the time, but if you walk off this stage today saying, you know what, I did the best I could for the right reasons, then that means you were successful, and you should take pride in that. Second thing I want to bring up, end of the year is usually our biggest time for retirements. The second biggest time is probably the end of December. So there was a few people that were listed in today's board minutes, and there actually have been in previous board minutes in September announcing that they would be retiring. So again, I want to thank all of those out there, my own members, but also the members of the other units that are retiring. Wish you much success as you move on in your life and whatever endeavor you undertake moving forward. Wish you the best and hopefully, you know, good health in the future. The next thing, and unfortunately, Mr. Ross, again, still my thing, but I just want to wish everyone out there, our students, our staff, and of course, the residents of Edison, a very happy Hanukkah, a happy Kwanzaa, a Merry Christmas. And actually, Dr. Alderelli, you said what I usually say to people, a very happy, healthy, and prosperous New Year, 2025. If you're traveling, please be safe in your travels. If you're not, that's great. Hopefully you spend, as was mentioned, good quality time with your families. That's really what the holidays are about. And for everyone involved with the school district, the students, the staff, obviously administration, a well-needed week off and rest up and come back rejuvenated for the beginning of a long stretch now in the winter months. Have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Revnac. During my speech earlier, I did thank the teachers and all the staff members, but one thing I forgot to thank is the ETEA. As the special thanks for all the wonderful events that you put together around the year, so many of them. I had the honor and privilege to attend many of your events, and they were all very, very nice. It made us feel special. So hopefully I look forward to continuing to participating in those events when I'm, yes.
There's one thing I forgot to mention, I apologize.
No problem.
I happened to be, you know, in the YET Center yesterday morning after a meeting, and I happened to walk in with the J.P. Stevens Choir performing, hearing, I believe it's, they're called the Wind and Sable, I'm not a music person, but playing the violin as you guys were in closed session. And actually tomorrow night at our ETA holiday party, we have the Edison High School Jazz Band performing. And I got to say, I know Mrs. White was there, the kids are so great. It just shows again what Edison's about, the talent that's here, the dedication and commitment of our students and our staff. It was really great, too, seeing a couple of the choir kids yesterday were students of mine last year, so getting to see them, as well as the conductor. Mr. Lee was a former student of mine, so I just want to mention that, and I do appreciate that.
Well, thank you so much, Matt, and thanks for all your efforts, Jerry, Susan, everyone else who works in your team so hard, Kelly and everyone, Carrie and everyone. Thank you so much. Next, public comments. Yes, Ralph, go ahead.
Ralph Arico, Plasky Drive, Edison, New Jersey. First and foremost, I would like to thank the three board members that are leaving, Mr. Rivera, Mr. Schneider, and Mr. Patel. We've had conversations, you know, in all ways, at the debate, and appreciate everything you've done for the district. Been there, done that a few times now, and then again. So hopefully I could live up to those expectations and do well for the students and the taxpayers and the student, everyone in the building. Dr. Alderelli, look forward to working with you. I was with you for a little while, and then I got a lot of new faces. I got to now familiar myself, I mean, I only left a couple of years ago. I mean, and I don't know of maybe one or two people in, on your staff, so hopefully I'll get to meet them shortly and work with them and have discussions with them. And over the next couple of days, a busy time of the year, I think I told Dr. Alderelli, in 12 days, my daughter's getting married, so it's all wedding mode right now. Then I'll be an empty nester, no one be at home, and I look forward to seeing everyone on January 2nd, and happy holidays to everyone, and be safe, and joyous New Year. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ralph. So I told you, Ralph, earlier before walking in, that four years back, when I attended this board meeting, the last meeting of the calendar year, you were the board president, it was your last meeting that time. And then now I'm the board president, and it's my last meeting, four years, fast forward. So welcome back to the board. Like I said earlier during my speech, the board is going to be in great hands with yourself, Mr. Shi, Mrs. Anjana Patel, Mr. Vishal Patel, Mrs. Pang, Mrs. White, and Vice President Romano, so, and my very good friend, Ronak Patel. So I'm, the reason I'm so happy and not regretting at all is, the board is in great hands with these board members. On top of it, if, now he will be bored if I say one more time, our superintendent, Dr., rock star, Dr. Alderelli, and his entire team. So it's, everything is good, so thank you so much. Yeah, looking forward to seeing great things. I don't, I don't wish to come and sit there with you guys from next month on, unless there is, if there is no 0% tax increase, I will come there. And I will tell the new board members that, yes, do the 0% tax increase. So otherwise, I don't wish to come there and sit there, because I believe that is going to be good. But I look forward to working with the administration on any issues that the community encounters. Thank you so much. Next for public comments. All right, no more public comments. Right, so that, that was amazing. This was a, like I said, it was a very light agenda. Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you to the administration. Everyone who comes in, Mrs. Conway, Mrs. Borowski, for being regulars in this meeting the whole year, has been wonderful. The fellow board members, Vice President Romano, Mr. Roth, thank you so much for your services. We really appreciate everything, and we have a lot of high hopes from the new board, especially with the zero tax increase and all continuing the progress that is going on from years to make things for our students better and better. Thank you so much, everyone, wishing everyone a wonderful and very happy holidays. Motion to end public comments.
Second.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Vishal Patel.
Second.
Mr. Schneider, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Right, thank you. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.